The time is now six P M. Our regular city council meeting for July thirteenth, twenty twenty one is now in session. Councilmember Scott will lead us with the opening prayer and a pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Please rise.
Shall we bow our heads? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings of this day. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you for all our Shirts residents. Bless these people and also those who could not be with us, and we ask that you pour out your blessings on our city, our citizens, and our families. Please guide us as we strive to make Shirts an even better place in which to live, work, play, and worship you. We have an idea and a vision, and we thank you for our talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, so we ask that you help us approach every project with good judgment and insight. Your righteousness transcends all of our efforts and understanding. Give us humble hearts that we may work together efficiently. Thank you for our city leaders, our state leaders, and our national leaders, and give us all the spirit of conciliation and unity, especially council and staff at this meeting tonight. We pray a special prayer for our first responders and their families. Please keep them safe from danger and give them the ability to make the best decisions when they are in harm's way, to safeguard not only their lives, but the lives of those whom they serve. We ask that you place your heavenly angels around our first responders and their families. Please grant us your wisdom so we will have the power of discernment to make the best decisions with good outcomes for all. Lead us in the paths of righteousness, justice, kindness, fairness, faithfulness, good judgment, equity, and love, and thank you for being here with us today and for counting us worthy of your love, in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Scott. Okay, we'll move on to city events and announcements, announcements of upcoming events.
Good evening, Mayor.
Okay.
On Tuesday, July thirteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh, we have tactical laser tag in Pickrell Park from eight to ten P M. More information can be found on shirts dot com. On July fifteenth, we have popsicle party at Heritage Oaks from six to seven P M. On the seventeenth, Saturday, we have Ed's Zoo Station. It's at Crescent Bend Natural Park from ten to eleven. The San Antonio Zoo Center for Conservation has selected Crescent Bend Natural Park as a harvesting location to help feed their Texas horn lizards. Come on out and join us to learn about the Texas horn lizard, carpenter ants, the history of the animals, and their importance. We also have float and flick in the park. It's Lilo and Stitch to keep you laughing all night from seven to eleven P M. And then on Thursday, July twenty-second, we have a casino night party at the Blue Bonnet Palace in Selma from six to nine. The Randolph Metro Rotary Club and many sponsors are hosting a free casino night party for all essential workers to say thank you for what they have done for us the last twelve-plus months. No cover charge for anyone. Free appetizers. Essential workers will also receive a thousand dollars in casino chips at no cost. Then we have our next popsicle party at the Community Playscape from six to seven. Again, free popsicles and activities for everyone. On Saturday, July twenty-fourth, we have Shark Tales, the next float and flick from seven to ten P M. at Pickrell Park. On Tuesday, July twenty-seventh, we have our next regularly scheduled council meeting. And then general announcement on November second, the city of Shirts will be holding its general election on November second, twenty twenty-one for the purpose of electing council members in place six and place seven for a three-year term from November twenty twenty-one to November twenty twenty-four. Any candidate desiring to have his or her name on the official ballot shall file with the city secretary an application in writing in the form prescribed by the Texas Election Election Code declaring themselves a candidate. Filing date is no sooner than July seventeenth, but since the seventeenth falls on a Saturday and city offices are closed, the date moves to Monday, July nineteenth, and no later than Monday, August sixteenth, by five P M. Qualifications for candidacy can be found online at shirts dot com as well as the city secretary office. And that is it for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kell. Next, we have announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Dr. Brown.
I have no announcements tonight, Mayor.
Okay, announcements or recognitions by the mayor. I have none, so we'll move on to the hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask before addressing the council for the record, please state your name and address. And I see that no one signed up for the hearing of residents, so we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Item number one, the approval of the minutes of our special meeting of July first with the housing authority and the minutes of our regular meeting for July sixth, twenty twenty-one. Item number two, appointments, appointments, resignations of board and commissions and committees, consideration their action regarding the resignation of David Reynolds, Board of Adjustments, and the resignation of Charles Reynolds, Historical Preservation Committee. The appointment of Holly, excuse me, the appointment of Jackie Hollis and Judith Williams to the Historical Preservation Committee, and the appointment of Dani Alena Salas as a regular member of the Board of Adjustments. And we have in our attendance, we have Judith Williams. Thank you for volunteering. Could you please stand up so the council can recognize you? Thanks again for taking the time to volunteer for this one. Item number three, resolution number twenty-one R sixty-five. This item has been pulled, so I'll read it during the discussion. Item number four, resolution number twenty-one R sixty-three. A resolution by the city council, the City Shirts Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with, I'm sorry, with L. Construction, the reason I had, they ran the letters together. L. Construction Incorporated for the application of H A five asphalt preservation product in Mesa Oak subdivision and other matters in connection therewith. Item number five, ordinance number twenty-one M twenty-eight. An ordinance by the city council, the City Shirts Texas, authorizing and amending the city council rules of conduct and procedures, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance and providing an effective date. Okay, council, do I have a motion to approve items number one, two, four, and five?
Mayor, I'd like you to, if you would, pull item.
Item four, okay. Item four has been pulled. Okay, do I have motion to approve one, two, and five?
Second.
Have motion by councilmember Hayward, second by councilmember Skagliola, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Council, any other comments? If none, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
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 We have six ayes, no objection, motion passes. So we'll move on to item number three. Resolution number twenty-one R sixty-five. A resolution by the city council, the City Shirts Texas, approving a request for a Shirts Main Street local flavor economic development grant for five thirty-nine Main Street in the city of Shirts, Texas, and related matters in connection therewith. All right, Mayor Pro Temp, you pulled this one out?
Yes, so I wrote a few things down, so if I'm looking down. I just wanted to make sure I cover my bases. I wanted to start by saying, I know I've had comments on the local flavor grant in the past, and I just want to be clear that I do support this grant program, and I really, I think that there's potential for growth and development in the area along Main Street downtown, so I am in support of that. I also support private property owners' rights to develop their properties as they see fit in accordance with local ordinances and zoning restrictions. Reviewing this particular proposal, it looks like five thirty-one Main Street is essentially going to be a smaller version of Old Main Ice House, which is in Siblo. The owner is the same. It's the same outdoor bar setup, similar seating and layout and aesthetics, and so it's a very successful business in Siblo. I don't doubt that it could be a very successful business in Shirts as well. My concern is the fact that this is a resolution in reference to the local flavor grant program, and this grant program uses money from the general tax fund, which is basically revenue from property taxes and sales taxes mostly, to help promote commercial activity along Main Street. And the program is intended to do certain things. I'm concerned that this particular application doesn't meet the desired criteria. So I kind of wanted to go over a couple of the criteria and just point out, you know, where I think that maybe it's not meeting that particular criteria. And I do all of this because I feel like, you know, we're using taxpayer dollars for this program, and I want to make sure that we're being good stewards of that money and actually meeting the intentions of this grant. So the grant program is intended to do the following: encourage attraction of small businesses to create local charm and help develop a sense of place in and around Main Street; to stabilize and improve property values; to foster civic pride in the beauty and accomplishments of the past; promote and to promote the use of historic structures; and also protecting and enhancing the attractiveness of the Main Street area for residents and visitors, as well as provide support and stimulus to businesses. So those items are all pulled directly from the grant program. So where I'm concerned, and where I see some, I guess, some items where this is not, you know, going to work with this particular project is, number one, that the way the project is designed, it's the back half of this particular lot. The establishment is going to be fully fenced, and the fences are already there. It's a privacy fence, so you can't see through it. So everything that we would be providing funds for happens behind that fence. So visibly, there's no benefit. So what's going to be put in will not create charm, beauty, or attractiveness. That's just, you know, directly from the verbiage of the grant program because it's not visible. So we kind of lose that benefit there. Next, you know, there's an emphasis on promoting the use of historic structures. So this particular property address has a building on it, a house that according to tax records was built in eighteen eighty. However, to my understanding, that that house is not part of this project. So all the money that we're putting into this project has nothing to do with that historic building, so we miss out on the opportunity to support and use a historic structure. The next point is that, I was talking about stabilizing and improving property values. So the point of this project is to essentially start an open-air bar kind of thing. So it's, when it comes to residential property, which is what is behind this property, typically in the real estate world, putting a bar or an outdoor entertainment establishment is not probably going to increase property values. Whether or not it decreases property values, I don't, I'm not going to say definitively, but there is concerns with noise, parking, and then perhaps criminal activity or just general activity that goes on around a bar in the late hours that is not conducive to residential environments, and we have residences that are right behind there. So as far as it raising property values, I don't see that as a possibility with the residential real estate there. residential real estate there. Then if you look at the commercial properties and you say, well, does it increase the value of the commercial entities along Main Street? I would say if it brought in business that would then be shared by those other properties, that's a possibility. But again, my understanding is that this establishment's going to be a Friday and Saturday evening business only, and the majority of the businesses on Main Street currently are daytime businesses to, for example, a florist, a thrift shop, a daytime restaurant, a coffee shop, a seamstress, beauty shops, and car shops. Those are all daytime businesses. So if this were a successful venture, the customers coming to that are not going to partake of the other businesses, so it's really not mutually beneficial. It's also going to bring additional traffic to Main Street, but again, it would only draw additional interest if there were more evening activities that were interested in getting started there. So, sorry to be lengthy. Finally, while the grant application does appear to meet the requirements for site improvement grant, which talks about landscaping and flatwork and all that kind of stuff, so that's fine. It does say that it has to conform to city regulations and building codes. When I look at the diagram there, according to the city staff, this particular business would require two parking spots. I don't see on the graphic or the mock-up or whatever, any, anything designated specifically for two parking spots, which is the minimum. But again, this is going to be an open-air bar, beer garden. It's obviously going to need more parking than that, so I think, as a side note, don't know if it's relevant to approving the grant, I think it's going to be problematic with the parking. So in conclusion, I would like to reiterate that I think this property owner has every right to develop his property as he sees fit within the confines of the existing city regulations and building codes, but I don't, I don't think that this particular project adequately meets the stated purpose of the grant program and should not be eligible for a local flavor grant. And I, you know, as I've kind of stated before, but I think I would like to formally say at this point, I think moving forward, we should be just a little bit more discriminatory with the funds. I think it's a great program. I would love to see Main Street develop, and we've seen some really good development. We've, you know, I'm very thankful that we have interest in developing Main Street and that at a minimum, the buildings are getting remodeled and functional and things like that. But this particular program, I just, or project, I do feel like misses out on a lot of the things that we're looking for, for this grant program, and so I don't think that it works. Thanks.
Okay. Council, any questions? Yes, council member Skagliola.
Yeah, Mr. James, where exactly does the grant money come from?
So it's general fund money.
It is general fund money. Economic development money?
Nope, general fund.
So it is coming out of the city taxpayers are funding it?
Yes, sir.
And what does the amount in the fund currently?
I don't know how much is left. Typically, the way the grant program works is we budget a certain amount per year. We pay the grants as the work is completed, and so often they roll from one fiscal year to the next. So typically, what we do is we then tap into the contingency fund for payments above that amount is how we do it.
Okay, and.
But it's all general fund money.
But, but since the inception of this local grant, how much, how much money has been paid out?
We have paid out in.
Just roughly, back of the envelope.
Can tell you unless Councilwoman Whitaker knows it and can chime in.
Approximately $200,000.
In the local flavor.
And how much do we expect is remaining in our, in our grant program?
So we, we refill it every fiscal year, so every fiscal year, we sort of add money, and then programs come through, we tap contingency to pay, and then refill it. So the amount per year varies significantly, and that's why we operate it that way.
That's interesting. I think it'd be more appropriate for the money to come out of EDC's accounts, however, there's probably legal constraints forbidding that sort of thing. So anyway, yeah, you know, I looked at this, and I really didn't have a problem. I think it's, you know, one individual is taking advantage, not, and I'm not using that word in a bad way. He's, he's capitalizing on the opportunity. How's that? And I think it's rather appropriate because the intention is a commercial social hub is what we're trying to turn Main Street into, developing a sense of place. I, I see that in this, in this type of a little development there. So personally, I have no problem with it.
Councilmember Scott.
Yeah, I thought you articulated it quite well. I do want to weigh in on, encourage the attraction of small businesses that will create local charm and help develop a sense of place. I have to echo Councilman Skagliola's sense of place. So the fence may be there, but there might be a reason for that. Charm is, I don't want to say relative, but it's somewhat subjective. I've seen furniture I thought was ratty, and it's chic, shabby, and I'm like, okay, yeah, maybe that's charming. It's how you, it's how you package it, right? I do think it would promote commercial development. I do think it would meet the criteria of strengthening, strengthening the economy of this city, and hopefully, they would use local vendors. I thought it was interesting about the Ice House in Sybalo. I didn't even know that existed until two teachers back in May invited me there after hours on a Friday at 5:00, and I was stunned, like, oh, what a local little jewel, right here in Sybalo. And then when I was waiting for them, I went to Emily's and got a smoothie, and it kind of, I hadn't been to downtown Sybalo in years, and it was, it's very cool. And I was thinking, why can't Shirts be like this? And I was kind of bummed out, you know, and I was like, I'm on board with this because if people, and Wagner's quite far across town, but it was obviously a destination location because of the charm of that particular venue. I do have problem with the general funds, but not enough if staff. I don't know. I'm just saying, I think it meets a lot of criteria, and I wanted to chime in on my personal experience with that.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thank you. I, I will echo the same comments. Building a sense of place downtown is something that we need. We're going to see some spinoff at some point, but unfortunately, we've only had one or two people that have spent any effort or funds out of their own pockets to do anything recently. And hopefully, these small steps will encourage others. You know, I know also from the real estate side, it's, it's a scary endeavor going into 80, 100-year-old buildings, and, you know, people want to see, you know, a new, a new interior on a 100-year-old building, and that just doesn't happen without effort, without funding, without a lot of work. And I think we need to help these folks that are, that are willing to put that work in to change that feel downtown, to invite more people. Granted, the majority of people in this particular establishment will be there in the evening, but they're still going to be a part of Shirts, and I think that's important. You know, and as the two ends of Main Street kind of grow together, it's going to take some time. You know, there's a lot of private property out there that's not going to turn over very quickly, but at least we're on the, I think we're on the right move, so.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I know, I know this is somewhat of a argumentative issue, but we've spent about $200,000 from the general fund on, on local flavor grants. And again, but that's not in the past year. That's over how long?
It's about three and a half, four years, I think.
So about, you know, maybe 60, 70, 75K a year.
That's about an average.
Typically, and we've had how many different business owners take advantage? Again, I'll defer back to Councilman Skagliola, probably a poor word right there. We've had, how many local business owners participate in this program?
We've had, I think, six different, and I'll say sort of properties, entity slash business owners participate. A couple of those have been more than one. So for instance, a Traveler Center, it was the owner of that, and it was one of the tenants both who participated. But we've had with this one about six different groups, if you will.
So the program has, in fact, provided assistance to local business owners and property owners over three years, about 75K a year. And again, if we go back and look at the division that came out of our sector plan for Shirts, the vision was to create a gathering spot, a social area for the City of Shirts on what is known as Main Street, the old part of Shirts. And again, over the past three years, we have a lot more projects coming on, but over the last three years, we can see where we've had, over the past few years, we've had Rocket Feed come in, we've got the Barhouse that came in, we have a barbecue restaurant that should be opening up on Main Street within the next month or two. This particular piece of real estate supports that enclave right there of where people are going to go and hang out. There are concerns with parking, but the Main Street Committee has been addressing parking, and that's why the city has now two municipal parking lots being developed on Main Street, one which is right across the street from the subject property. So that should alleviate the issues for parking. And again, if you look at the, the overall vision that the community expressed a few years back, it has not been a rapid transition, but when you look at the businesses that have added, the coffee shop on the corner down by Shirts Parkway and Main, the soon-to-becoming ice cream shop in that same locale, a restaurant, I believe, at the far end by Shirts Parkway, I think these types of programs have all been beneficial in spurring that kind of entrepreneurship and development in, in that area. And again, when we had the initial conversations about local flavor grants well over three years ago, what we found out was Shirts was one of the, if I stand corrected, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Shirts was one of the few communities in the area, when you look at Universal City, Live Oak, Selma, New Braunfels, Sagin, Sybalo, that had no local flavor grants. So we actually were at a disadvantage compared to our local communities. Again, I don't have a problem with this one. I will restate what I said probably two or three weeks ago. I think this is an excellent discussion point that council needs to have, and I encourage that we include this on the agenda for our upcoming budget retreat so that we can get a better feel for what the city should and should not do with regards to local flavor grants and business development. I agree 1,000% that we need to talk to EDC and see what we can leverage from EDC to help promote this program. I firmly believe that not everything that we can do for the community and for this area has to come out of the general fund. And if we decide to take anything from the general fund, I think we probably need to, as we have over the past three years, tweak the program, have an updated discussion on it, and figure out what dollar figures we want to obligate to the program and what those rules are as far as what projects we will cover and which projects are affected by various construction timelines and things along that. Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Dalla.
So I guess, back in, it was about 2015, we had that last bond election for the fire station and for the money that we committed to the FM Roads. And somehow, I wound up being chairman of that bond committee, and I got to work quite a bit with the city manager at the time, John Kessel. And as we're going through these exercises to what we're looking at to put on that bond election, we talked a lot about the previous bond election, which is the election that the voters approved the $1 million for Main Street. On that same election, they also turned down a proposition to set aside $1 million for a museum, and I think there's another like four or $5 million potential project for an amphitheater in the Deets Creek area here behind City Hall that the voters also turned down. And we talked a lot about, you know, how to invest tax dollars and how to get the biggest bang for a buck. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, I really struggled with was the idea of investing $1 million in Main Street and these other projects as well, and I was thankful that the voters had the foresight to turn those down. But the Main Street really was problematic for me as an individual at that time, and it was with a lot of conversation, you know, that you realize that, you know, sometimes the city has to have a bigger goal and a bigger objective in mind. You know, that we had that whole downtown area, all those residents that are hamstrung by the floodplain, and, you know, the lack of economic growth and economic development, as well as the hindrance caused by the regulations that they had to deal with, is that, you know, as a city, you know, we would have a choice. Do we let the area continue to decline and maybe eventually become a more serious problem with urban blight? Or do we choose to make some targeted investments to do something to, you know, show people that we're committed to, you know, making sure that the area doesn't go into decline, maybe try to make it a little bit better? And the Main Street bond was, you know, what came out of that. And I finally came around to that idea, and, and I was kind of glad to see that, you know, after that was passed, that, you know, we found some additional funds to put toward it, and, you know, we're going to have a total of a little over $2 million invested in that by the time we're done. And I think that, you know, what we're doing with the local flavor grant program is some of the same efforts, is that we're trying to leverage some private investment, you know, to do something better for the community, to create a sense of place, to encourage investment in an area that's struggling with additional investment. And, you know, I'm not going to do cartwheels in excitement over the proposed use of this grant money, but again, you know, we have to decide, you know, do we want to, you know, let come what comes and sometimes just kind of vermin us a little bit and keep going, or do we want to over-regulate it? And I'm more toward, you know, letting the individuals decide what they want to do with their properties, and if it meets the guidelines that we've set up, then I'm okay with it.
Okay, council, any other comments? Just to clarify your point, you indicated the total amount up to $17,195.81.
Yes, sir. The front part of the property received a portion of money earlier within the year, under, under $3,000, and so that's why it's that amount. Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is in addition to that amount?
This is in addition to get up to the maximum of $20,000.
Okay. All right. And I just wanted to clarify that. Mayor Protemp Whitaker, you have additional comments?
Yeah, just, obviously, I'm the one that started it, so I want to make sure that I don't get misconstrued after everyone's comments, because I definitely want to reiterate that I do support the program. I've just found over the last couple of months that it seemed like we, we put these items on the consent agenda as if, you know, they've asked for the money, and it's a guaranteed automatic, and I feel like because it comes from the general fund, I feel like it's, it's on us as council members who have the details behind each and each project to look at it and see if it really does reflect what it is that we're looking for. I'm new, so I, you know, I don't have the history behind, you know, he's talking about the bond program, I'm not on Main Street Committee. From my perspective, this particular project, I just, you know, I think the fence barrier that you can't see the, you know, like an open-air garden, you know, beer garden, kind of feels to me more inviting. So I felt like there was a lot of little things that maybe it just wasn't, and it's a lot of money, too. That's the thing, you know, the initial, there's been $5,000 and $3,000 grants and things like that, and that's one of those things, well, you know, well, it'll be fine, you know, it's worth a little bit of an investment. This is a bigger an investment, and this is also, again, it's general fund money. So I just wanted to highlight some of those things that I felt like it didn't match up with what the grant's purpose was. I can hear that the other council members feel like it's meeting the, the purpose of the grant, and I can respect that. And so I'd just like to, I mean, we'll vote as we vote, but I'm not opposed to the plan, I'm not opposed to this property owner doing what, you know, he's going to do, and as I said, you know, Old Main Ice House is a very successful business there. I just want to make sure that when we take a big chunk of taxpayer dollars and give it to a private entity to develop their personal business, that it's really also meeting the, the desire of this particular program and helping support that development downtown. So, thank you.
All right. All right, council, any other comments? Yes, yes, councilmember Brown.
Brutal of the tax rolls. A lot of these older homes and whatnot, taxes are frozen, et cetera, et cetera, but, you know, we have tax values on Main Street of $58,000, $60,000, $119,000. These, these properties that have been redeveloped are $289,583,000. So there is a huge increase just. So there is a huge increase just in the tax value, uh, of, of these properties. So, I mean, there, there is value, we may not see it, you know, dress, driving downtown, uh, on a, on a Tuesday afternoon, but it's there.
All right, council, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 21R65?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion by councilmember Dalla, second by councilmember Skagliola. Council, any other comments? Now, let's call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Nay.
We have six ayes, one objection, motion passes. We'll move on to, uh, item number four, Resolution Number 21R63. A resolution by the city council of the city of Shirts, Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Andale Construction Incorporated for the application of AH5 asphalt preservation product in the Mesa Oaks subdivision and other matters in connection therewith. Uh, Dr. Skagliola, you pulled this one out, any?
Yeah, hey Doug, you know, I, I just had to give you an opportunity to come up here, because, uh, you know, I don't want you to be sitting back there getting too comfortable. No, seriously, uh, I, I pulled this, uh, because of transparency, really. You know, if I run the risk again and blame for doing something or not having done something further down the road, I wanted to be, uh, known that at least the issue was explored thoroughly. Now, uh, yeah, I, I believe Shirts is a learning organization. We, we've, uh, been down this road a couple of times of, of repaving, and quite frankly, I, I do like the, uh, the, the, uh, HA5 asphalt, um, it, it's something I, I hadn't heard of before. I've heard of slurry seals, I've heard of, you know, bun, overlays and things like that. So this looks like this has a lot of potential to it, and I'm, I'm very excited about that. Uh, the, the problem I have is, uh, how lo, how old is the Mesa Oaks subdivision?
Mesa Oaks, I believe, is about probably 13 years old. The roadways are not in real bad shape, that's why you wanna catch them now when they're above the 75% on the PCI, so we can keep the roadways, that'll increase our numbers back up to 95, 98, so we can keep that percentage for years to come, five to nine years probably, before we have to reapply. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, I, I, I have a little problem with that, because I, I thought that most warranties, like, for, for roads and whatnot, should let about 15 years or so in a, in a newer subdivision.
Yes, sir. In, in the perfect world, 15 to 20 years is the life expectancy of a roadway, but you still have to do the maintenance, and this, this is maintenance.
Okay. Yeah, I, I noticed the, uh, the, the price on it, like, $3, $3.05 a square yard, this seems very, very reasonable.
It is, it is very reasonable.
Okay, and once, once, once again, I, I don't have a problem with this, I, I, I read the package details, uh, it looks like you reached out to the HOAs to coordinate with them. It's gonna be a little bit of a, uh, dance, a little razzle-dazzle, because it's a, a two-day process. So I, I wanna thank you for going through those, those efforts. You know, uh, celebrate a little win. Okay, and, uh, and, and then, and then if the project turns out to be really, really good, yeah, we, we can celebrate a big win, because, uh, we, we have another, uh, uh, more opportunities to, uh, use, use the product again in, in the future. So, um, go ahead.
I was gonna say, actually, we used this product in 2018.
Yeah, up, up in, uh, I'll roll it very, and, and it's still holding up good.
Yes.
That, what is it, three years now?
Yes, a little over three.
Three, a little over three, yeah. Um, so, so I'm, I'm curious, you know, to see, see how long that lasts. But it, it, it's another, uh, it's another, um, uh, tool we have available. So, uh, thank you so very much, and that's all I have, sir. And, uh, I have no problem, uh, recommending we, we approve Resolution 21R63. Second.
That second came from? Davis, okay. Uh, before we continue, uh, councilmember Dalla, you had?
Yeah, just, just one question on the cost of that, uh, how does that compare to slurry seal cost?
Actually, you get, uh, a couple of extra years out of this than the slurry seal. This HA5 is designed specifically for the residential roadways. Uh, it's a two-part application. They come in in the morning and they'll, they'll lay the first layer, the first set, and then they'll come back a little bit later and put a second, and it takes 24 hours for that to cure overnight. So the roadways are open, back open in the morning. Uh, Andale Construction and City of Shirts help transport anybody to and from their homes. Uh, emergency vehicles are always, of course, they can get through there at any time.
Now, on a cost basis, how does it compare to slurry seals? Are they more expensive?
Cost basis, 305 a square yard for the HA5, and it is 350 a square yard for the slurry seal.
So this is actually less expensive and we have a longer warranty?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty impressive. That's a good job, thank you.
Okay. As, uh, you mentioned, uh, Royal Verde was the one that, um, had it, um, done a couple of years ago. The residents are pretty happy, and I passed through that neighborhood not too long ago, it still looks like it's, uh, pretty, uh, new street, so, uh, also the price is, uh, is great. All right, we have a motion made by councilmember Skagliola and second by councilmember Davis. Uh, council, any other comments? If not, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
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 We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes, thank you. Right, we'll move on to item number six. Resolution Number 21R64. A resolution by the city council of the city of Shirts, Texas, calling for an election to be held on November 2nd, 2021, for the purpose of electing councilmembers for Place Six and Place Seven for a three-year term and making provisions for the conduct of elections, authorizing contracts with the county clerk of Comel County and the elections administration, administrators of Bear and Guadalupe Counties to conduct this election, authorizing the election to be held as a joint elec, election, resolving other matters, incidents, and related to such elections, and declaring an effective date. Ms. Dennis, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor, council and, uh, management staff. The resolution before you does call the November 2nd, City of Shirts joint general election with Bear, Comel, and Guadalupe Counties for city councils in Places Six and Seven for a three-year term beginning November 2021 and ending 2024. The first date of file for place on the ballot is Saturday, July 17th, but since our offices are closed, it moves to Monday, July 19th. The last date of file is August 16th, uh, by 5:00 PM. Candidate packets, of course, can be found on the city's website, and we do have printed packets in the city secretary's office for those that wish to come pick it up. Uh, within the packet, uh, you received, uh, in your, uh, agenda packet, there are draft early voting and draft election vote centers. The reason why they are draft is because they have not been approved by the county's commission court. They are to be presented to them the end of this month, and I should have a final for both of those, and I will be providing updated information. Also in the candidate packets, um, that I provided you, there was a cost estimate, I have a cost estimate correction for Bear County. When I originally spoke to the Bear County election administrator, she says, you know, let's go with the 3,000, 3,500. She came back to tell me, very good news, we have actual cost savings, that, uh, the charge is gonna be $1,155.51. So, you know, because we are so good, they give us a discount. Um, so the, uh, total cost estimated for all three counties, if everything goes well, we're looking at $42,247.91, give or take, you know. Uh, early voting does begin October 18th and ends Friday, October 29th, and of course, Election Day is November 2nd, 2021, from 7:00 to 7:00. Uh, like I said, I will be providing updated finalized, uh, uh, early voting locations for all three counties and the, uh, vote centers. And that will be, I can present them either in informational packets or informational item, but all this stuff will be finalized and put out in the magazine, as well as printed out and on our website.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis, council, questions?
For approval.
Wonderful.
More questions?
That's all I have.
Is there a resolution, is there a motion to approve Resolution 21R64?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion made by Mayor Proton Whitaker, second by Ca, councilmember Hayward. Council, any other comments? If not, let's call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Have seven ayes, no objection.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing, ordinance number 21S27. An ordinance by the city council of the city of Shirts, Texas, to approve a specific use permit to allow for a monopole, uh, tower communications facility on approximately .056 acres of land located northeast of the intersection of FM 3009 and FM 78, also known as 200 FM 3009, also known as Guadalupe County Property Identification Number 153960, City of Shirts, Guadalupe County, Texas. Mr. James, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian James, uh, Assistant City Manager, City of Shirts. Uh, as you can see from the, uh, the map above, um, what we have before us is a proposal, uh, FM 78 right here, FM 3009 this way, uh, and generally this location on the Lockway Storage Property, uh, the applicant is proposing a specific use permit, requesting a specific use permit for a, uh, monopole cell tower. Uh, generally, it's just over 100 feet tall, um, zoom in on the location. Um, again, to be clear, the city of Shirts has specific regulations for the construction of cell towers in our UDC, um, based on this type, and this zoning district, an SUP is required. Um, really, the test becomes, uh, given federal regulations is, uh, it's not fully discretionary on the part of the city. If the applicant can demonstrate there's a need for coverage, if they can demonstrate they provided all the information for the city to fully evaluate it, uh, we don't necessarily have the ability to just say no because we don't want it. The other is, uh, all of our residents typically like having cell service, uh, even those were congested times. Uh, so this one is, is pretty straightforward. Staff did a thorough and extensive review. Um, again, the property is owned GB2, which allows this with a, uh, an SUP. Uh, it's a monopole, so it's not the metal frame with the guy wires. Um, they've provided a site plan, uh, showing the tower, the equipment, where, uh, maintenance vehicles would park, things like that. Um, so they've met all those requirements for screening. Staff did look at this, uh, in conjunction with the future alignment of that, future extension of 3009 that'll veer off to Cross 78, and this shouldn't pose a problem for that. Um, again, you can see what, uh, the pole will look like, and again, what typically the equipment would look like. This would allow for co-location as well for others to be on there, which is, which is what we want. So again, it's, it's a fairly straightforward application. Staff's done an extensive review of it, took the item to the planning and zoning commission who recommended approval of it, and so again, staff is recommending approval, uh, of the item before you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. James. This item is on the agenda as an open public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the city council in reference to this subject? Please, sir, and before addressing the council, for the record, could you please state your name and address?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you for being, uh, seeing me, Vince Heavener with Vincent Gerard and Associates representing the applicant on this. I think Ms. Dennis wanted to help me start this PowerPoint, but, um, briefly, um, some of the Verizon folks, the Network Operations Center is just right across the street in Tri-County Parkway.
Well, I can find, if I can find it, let's see here.
Yeah, is, is this the applicant? I'm sorry, Mr. James, is this the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Let's, let's hold on, is there any, uh, anyone that wants to speak? Uh, normally, we allow the applicant a little more than three minutes. Is there anyone that?
Okay.
I don't think anyone's taking up, uh, that offer. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. All right, sir, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Got it. Um, yes, this is, um, I haven't been in here in a while, I appreciate you guys seeing me. Basically, I was telling you about the NOC, the Network Operations Center is just right across the street from Verizon. They have, uh, a lot of people that would like to sit down and meet you, uh, city manager. Um, they have hundreds of employees, were hundreds of employees there before the pandemic, but, uh, they've got a huge facility, we'll talk about it in a little bit. I will try. There's a great slide to start out with. I blame Apple, because, uh, that, the phone that we are now using is a supercomputer. What, what that, that slide shows is all the applications that we're now using. I use many of these that are shown on there, so do you. Uh, we get weather updates, we get first alerts, we get Amber Alerts, um, we get our favorite, uh, college team, whatever, all that stuff is running on that same site, and it's just basically logged down, bogged down, infrastructure-wise. This is a capacity site, and what it's doing is it's gonna relieve another site called, uh, what's called Minlo, but it's on your Live Oak Water Tower. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Can you hear me okay? I, I, I'm switching back and forth, okay. So this, these, this is where Verizon is right now. Some of y'all may not know where exactly these are. The Es are the existing, I just put an arrow for the network site. Um, E is the Live Oak Water Tower, which was, uh, used to be called, uh, Minlo, and the city asked them about 1996 to decommission a tower to go on that water tower, and they were happily obliged to do so. Um, there's one way to the south in Selma, that existing site up there, way to the southeast in Universal City in front of Randolph. Uh, there's one in, called, uh, I think in Siblo called Steel, and then there's a small cell over there right in the middle, closest to us on the Walmart site. Through this exercise, this is basically the master plan for Verizon the next few years. They have identified one, Maskey Road Site, number one, uh, that's a future ring, and you'll see the coverage maps, you'll see there's a little bit of gap over there. They identified two, which the city staff kept asking us to look at, which is a Corbett Water Tower. That's gonna be in play in a few years, because as we talked about, there's so much development going down there. Where you go, where you grow, we have to go as well. So the Corbett Water Tank will serve some of that south area, um, it's close to the Randolph, east side of the Randolph, and, and number three is a small cell called Elbell. Um, and we've identified Elbell that could go possibly on the Shirts High School light pole that T-Mobile put up, replaced and put their antennas on that. So we seem to have a pretty good handle on the future, uh, coverage for Shirts. Basic reasons to support, uh, we have capacity issues. When COVID happened, everybody was work from home, school from home, and the infrastructure was completely overloaded on everybody. A lot of those people are still not back at work, and, you know, it's putting some strain on these sites. Better 911 coverage, um, city code compliance, your staff, uh, uh, mentioned this, it, it complies with all your codes, your SUP, your setbacks, all the other criteria there. It's in a GB2 zone, it's heavy commercial, uh, self-storage. Um, I talked to Ms. Coolman, the communications officer at, at Shirts PD, they said they use Verizon. Um, they also say they use Bear Metro, uh, 911 system, we'll talk about that as well. Uh, but it does provide better coverage for first responders. Most of the 911 calls are called and used from handhelds now, I think over 67%. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about the, the NOC in, in Shirts as well, but here's what we call the Doppler radar maps. These are the RF coverage maps that they provide from the RF engineering department. You can see right along, uh, R. Richards Boulevard, that high-capacity area, high-usage area, multifamily, school, uh, the high schools there, uh, there's a lot of rooftops as well. That's what we're trying to hit. We're trying to relieve what you see in, in that triangle above that area is Live Oak Water Tower, and the red antenna, uh, is the one that's overloaded. So that we're trying to overload that capacity or offset that capacity as well. You can see where the proposed site is, is, as well on that screen. Um, in conjunction with looking at the city water tower at, uh, Corbett, we just put this slide together for you to see where that coverage would end, so it's not a replacement site for this coverage. So the existing coverage maps, red is good, red is, is real good in-building coverage in rooftop and kitchen. Um, green and yellow are not so good. Predominantly, we have coverage when we're driving around in our vehicles. It's, it's not about voice and text, it's about that data. The, the good example of capacity is when you're downloading an app, and it's spinning and spinning, taking three or four minutes to come on. That is a capacity issue, and that's what we have right now at Live. that's what we have right now at Live Oak. They said at Live Oak Sector, we're at 142%. So it's already overloaded. And this, this is what happens when the new site goes on air. You can see it really covers some of the area at that major intersection, and we all here, very familiar with that railroad track. That is probably one of the busiest railroad tracks in the state. So, sitting there, 50 or 60 cars loaded on each side of 78 and Roy Richards, they're all stuck in traffic, using, needing some little space to offload and make a phone call. Again, the pattern, the coverage pattern for the new site called Schaefer, quite a bit substantially south of 78 as well, but it's also bleeding into that area to the south at older neighborhood towards the park. And this is a water tower, this is Corbett, and Corbett, like I said, is going to be in play as a new search ring probably in the next couple of years. In your backup package, Steph has provided you a candidate summary, and these are the candidates within the ring. We talk about this just briefly on this one. There's seven candidates, and then ours is the one, one prime candidate. One, too close to residential, two in the flood plain, three, that's school district track, and they're really, they're also in the flood plain next to that Deets Creek diversion. Five is a floodway, six is flood plain, seven wasn't interested. They have a development track there, commercial, and they're pretty close to residential. So if you go outside this ring, you create a problem with where you go and how you serve the needs for RF. Just overall, where everything is, other sites, other properties, there's an AT&amp;T pole in Cibolo, there's a new pole that we got approved in Universal City in orange, some of the other sites. The NOC is shown on there across I-35. So those sites are existing and proposed sites that we're looking at, and I included the Corbett Water Tank because it's probably going to be an RF objective in the next few years. Here's a picture of the NOC and their tower. I think this is the only tower that Shirts approved in the last 20-something years that I've been working in this area, but it's kind of, one of the planning commissioners says it's kind of a landmark. You know where you are when you see that. It's, it's a $5 million switch facility. They're not really open about it, it's high security because it controls every site from Waco down to Brownsville, Texas through that site. So, like I said, they'd like to be able to meet and greet. There's a couple of directors there that would love to talk to some of the people in Shirts where they work. But before the pandemic, they had hundreds of people there employed, multiple vendors, contractors such as myself, that would come down in Shirts, stay overnight, do business, eat, stuff like that. Something I normally do is get on cellreception.com. It just kind of tells me how good the coverage is in an area. I know it's not as accurate as it should be, but out of 167 reviews, no carrier got more than two stars. I don't know if that's because some of the people that are happy with Verizon or AT&amp;T or what other coverage that we have here just don't report it, but it's just kind of a good indicator for me to see if there is a problem in the area. And then the summary, basically, we try to look for any vertical opportunity. The last thing they want to do is build a site. It's not, it's more expensive than any other option. So we're happy to say that the Corbett Tower could be a site in the future unless there's another vertical opportunity. Bear Metro, Bear Met's 911, they have got a state-of-the-art system where if you dial 911, they get you on the screen and they know where you're at. So I've told my children years ago, if you're really in trouble, just dial 911, and they can see you on where you're at. The additional site, though, helps them triangulate more accurately. So this benefits the first responders. That's about it. If y'all have any questions, I have that summary of candidate stuff, I can answer those as well.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, council, floor's open for discussion. Yes, Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, the only question I have is, Mr. James knows it's coming to him. No issues with the future potential for the 3009 extension?
No, sir. We've looked at it, again, made, worked with them on that, so the road can come around it.
Thanks.
Counsel, any other comments? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I'm surprised this is the first time I've seen, that I know, I know I missed some meetings last year because of my husband's health, but proposals coming to us for the towers, when I look around, I see 5G everywhere. It's like you blinked and it is here, and it's here in a big way. So have there been other companies that have come to Shirts and asked to put up towers? Are these truly the first ones in the area? Please catch me up, Mr. James.
No, that's okay. So again, if you look at our elevated water towers, water tanks, you'll notice cell tower equipment antenna on top of those. And so typically, folks', cheapest option is co-locate on an existing facility. What you're seeing, and I think what he kind of talked about is in part because of the change of how we're living with the pandemic, with growth in the area, things like that, people using computers for more things, there are just some gaps in coverage. And so part of what he talked about are there different types of equipment. So we have had some of the smaller network nodes come in to apply to locate essentially almost on our light poles, if you will.
Right.
You know, not the tall. So we, it's been a while since we've had a request for one of the tall poles, you know, in a while because of that. But in my career, these things tend to kind of come in waves. So it could be we see a few more, then don't for a while, and then things like that.
Oh, I see them go up in a matter of days. When I'm driving to work, it's just stunning.
And they can go fast.
Somebody has deep pockets and they're going up everywhere. My concern is, we've had people come and lobby here, and we couldn't do anything about it because it's not our decision. We've had, this has been a couple of years ago, a lady came up and she was very concerned about the 5G because there wasn't a lot of research at that time. All of the cell phone studies, they were from the 1990s when a businessman was on a phone, you know, 20 minutes, and there's levels of radiation, et cetera. I'm not a conspiracy theory person per se, but I would urge some caution. We cannot stop technology from coming. Technology's a wonderful servant, it is a horrible master. It is, it can really not be good on many levels.
Yes, ma'am.
As we saw when the power grids went down during the storm and, you know, whenever, I remember some years ago going to the bank, I couldn't deposit or get out money because the computer systems were down. All of these, it's a double-edged blade. It's making a breathtaking argument that we need, you know, more 5G and we need more the connectivity and, you know, consumers, and we can't stop life from coming the way it is. I would, my question would be, the types of providers that you're using. First of all, I'm going to backtrack one minute.
Okay.
I think the US is kind of jumping the gun. I need to research a little bit more, but the FCC, they're mostly, from my understanding, telephone, cell company executives, there's no engineers, there's no medical people. They're lawyers and they're, they're very heavily vested in making this happen. I also see in the media, whenever I'm reading, like a frenzy almost to like, oh, we have to catch up with a 5G race and other countries are beating us and all of this. The future's going to be pretty interesting. I hope I live long enough to see it. The Internet of Things, that's a real thing. It's not only your cellphone and your laptop, it's your refrigerator, it's your car, it's everything. And that's part of this phenomenon that's driving this data. It's just going to be everywhere and everything. My question for you, and I'm not, again, I, you know, we can't stop change nor do I want to, I'm not a LUDite, I'm certified to teach technology and technology application, good servant, horrible master. I'm concerned because some of the world's leading telecom equipment manufacturers, including, I'm not going to say it right, probably Huawei and ZTE, they're Chinese companies with murky ownership structures and close ties to China's authoritative, authoritarian, one-party government. Many, and this is from the Atlantic, that's very progressive, it's very credible in my opinion, leans super left, so I'm not, I'm saying, I don't believe it's political, I think it's more factual. Many in the US national security establishment rightly fear that the equipment made by these companies could allow Beijing to siphon off sensitive personal or corporate data, or use well-concealed kill switches to cripple Western telecom systems during an act of war. The mere threat of this activity would endow China's leadership a geopolitical leverage at all times. This is not the only article, there's many of them.
Sure.
So my question would be, what equipment are y'all using to expand this? It does matter, as we've seen, you know, the ransomware attacks, there were questions with the voting machines. I mean, it's a very big deal. Cybersecurity is a very, very big deal right now. And so can I ask the gentleman in attendance, what, who your vendors are, why you're expanding this venture?
Sure. Good, good question. Huawei, Huawei is how you pronounce it.
Huawei?
Yeah, Huawei.
Thank you.
They've been banned. CommScope has come up with a 5G antenna that's going on all the macros. CommScope. Ericsson is also doing a lot of antennas, mostly for Volti, 4G LTE. 5G is here, not in millimeter band, that's why CommScope introduced those new 5G antennas that are going on macros to talk to the small cells. Now, you have small cells, like the gentleman said, all over the place here, not predominantly in the whole city, but in some of the more concentrated areas, and they will talk to the macros. But yeah, they've been replaced.
Okay, thank you. That sets my mind at ease quite a bit. I appreciate it.
Counsel, any other comments? I can certainly see the need for this one, especially during the school, when the kids break from one classroom to another, all of a sudden you got 2,500 users.
Oh, yes.
Come in.
Big-volume schools, yes, sir.
Yes.
Data especially, because they're on, they're on their social media and they're on their apps.
Oh, they, they're on it as soon as they walk out that door.
So that, that Elbell small cell going right there at the school ball field where the lights are, that would be perfect for them, as well as this site, too.
All right. Counsel, any other comments? If not, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 21 S-27?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Dalla. Counsel, any other comments? If not, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
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 We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. All right. Our City Secretary, Brenda Dennis, will provide us with a roll call confirmation on agenda items, consent agenda items one, two, and five, and discussion items three, four, six, and seven.
Yes, Mayor. Consent agenda items one, two, and five. Motion was made by Councilmember Hayward, seconded by Councilmember Skagliola. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, Councilmembers Davis, Scott, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, and Brown voted yes, no one voted no. Motion passed. Item number three, resolution number 21 R-65. Motion was made by Councilmember Dalla, seconded by Councilmember Skagliola. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker voted no. Councilmembers Davis, Scott, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes. Motion passed. Item number four, resolution number 21 R-63. Motion was made by Councilmember Skagliola, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, Councilmembers Davis, Scott, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes, no one voted no. Motion passed. Item number six, resolution number 21 R-64. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, seconded by Councilmember Hayward. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, Councilmembers Davis, Scott, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes, no one voted no. Motion passed. Item number seven, ordinance number 21 S-27 on first reading. Motion was made by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Dalla. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, Councilmembers Davis, Scott, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes, no one voted no. Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, is workshop, workshop discussion on the results of the water and wastewater rate study. Ms. Williams, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Suzanne Williams. I'm the Director of Public Works for City of Shirts, and I'm going to introduce our agenda item with our Water-Wastewater CIP. Ultimately, we'll be talking about the Water-Wastewater Rate Study, but it is very important for me to talk about the CIP a little bit because one of the most important components of this rate study you will see is that it is directly tied to the CIP. It is tied to the exact projects that we do need to be able to provide our residents with safe, reliable water. As you know, we've been developing a robust CIP program, and this is going to be a bird's-eye view. I don't expect you to, to read this, and we won't get into it, because this, the agenda item is really about the rate study. But I'd like to highlight some of the projects so you can understand, so to help you understand how they are needed. These projects aren't necessarily projects that would be nice to have. They are projects that are needed. These next two slides are the, is this fiscal year and the next fiscal year. These projects, some of these projects are spread out, they're spread out for timing purposes, and they're also spread out for funding purposes. By next year, on that far, the far-right column, those are the funding sources, and you'll see that by next year, we start running into challenges with funding. One of the challenges for funding for us, though, is not necessarily for planning because some of our projects come upon us where we don't, we don't necessarily drive the timeline, and we don't necessarily drive the need. So while throughout the years, we work with Finance Department, we work with Engineering Department, and we have constant communication so we can develop funding sources and timing sources, we have projects like the Riata Lift Station. That is actually a TechDOT-driven project. So while the Riata Lift Station works for us, because they're expanding I-35, we have to respond to their timeline and actually move it. So in order to do that, we need to come up with that funding. Another example is the Crest Oak Sewer Line. This is a sewer line that we did identify that needs to be expanded. However, because of development coming in, we've actually had to move that up on our, on our list in our CIP, which, again, that moves funding around. Quardor Oaks is another legitimate project that we need, we did as a result of the FM 1103, but it wasn't in our CIP, and, but it needed to get done. Aviation Heights Waterline Replacements, that is a project that has been going on for several years. We are actually in the process of wanting to shore this up. This neighborhood has outdated 2-inch water lines. This will bring them up to 8-inch water lines that will actually support fire protection for them. We've also coordinated with the SPAM program on this. The roads have also been identified for SPAM, so we would, we need to get in there, finish our water projects, so then SPAM can get in and finish the roads, and these residents can get the water service they deserve. This is a very important project. It's 16-inch dedicated transmission line. Basically, what it will do is take water from the East Live Oak to the I-35 tank. Right now, it takes a lot of pressure for East Live Oak to move that water through that line to serve our residents. So our residents are currently experiencing pressure challenges, but then also we are experiencing maintenance challenges, because when that high pressure hits those lines, we experience breakages. So we have that challenge. This will mitigate, eliminate that challenge. And I'll end on FM 1518 utility relocations. This is another project that is being driven by TechDOT for their widening of the road. Some of the most important things is that while these, some of these projects are eligible for reimbursement, we have factored that into future years for funding, but initially, we have to have that funding now. So I'd like to introduce, we have David and Megan. We're working with an outside, outside firms for the water rate study. They will be going into detail about that, and I will be happy to answer any questions about the CIP, but I just, I wanted to lay a foundation for you to be able to understand what they looked at for their water rate water study. Megan?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
As Suzanne mentioned, I'm Megan Kirkland. I'm with Newden Strategies and Solutions, and we have been working on your water and wastewater rate study for this year. So I always like to kind of start off So I always like to kind of start off our presentations with reminding you that we're looking at our utility fund, which is a separate proprietary fund. It is a business-type activity, so we need to treat it like a business. And so, kind of, you are councilmen and women, but we're almost also Board of Directors when we're looking at this fund. So we just kind of wanted to give y'all a little bit of the history of what y'all have done for rate increases in the past. Now, as you can see, this past year for 2021, we had no rate increases. And so here's a regional bill comparison. This just compares your water and wastewater bill to other cities. I do want to stress, this is not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison. Every city is different. Every city treats their water and wastewater differently. And then also, this is for your average residential customer at 8,400 gallons water and 5,000 wastewater. And so as you can see, you're right about in the middle of the pack compared to your other cities. So some of the main issues we were really focusing on is first, your growth, as y'all are growing, also the capital improvement projects that Suzanne mentioned. We also have your SSLGC water purchases, mainly with the Guadalupe plant getting ready to come on. And then also, we also want to look at the rate structure and simplify that. Here's just a graph that kind of shows your growth, and so this is particular to water accounts. As you can see, we're doing about 300 accounts per year for growth. However, this is just 300 every year. Growth does not come 300 every year in reality, so we could have more one year, less the other year. So it is important to still review this and keep monitoring this every year, just based on growth. And then here's just a couple of graphs for the capital improvement projects. Everything that we are using in our rate study matches the CIP that Suzanne just talked about. And then here's just a table that shows your water purchases for SSLGC. And so, this Guadalupe plant, previous councils have already approved moving toward this, and it's just finally, in 2023, will come to fruition, and it'll be about a 10% increase on your water purchases, and then it'll go back down to 3% once we get over that initial Guadalupe And also, I just want to talk about kind of simplifying this rate structure. Really was because we wanted to, A, help customer understanding, we also want to make sure we maintain conservation, and also, legal defensibility was a big part. And so currently, our rate structure is about 10 volumetric tiers, and then that varies between each meter size. And then we do have conservation right now, so it's an inclining block structure, so the more water you use, the higher the rate. And so we did want to keep that and maintain that, so we do continue the inclining block structure. And then for legal defensibility, we are eliminating the outside multiplier, but that only reduces your overall revenues by less than 1%. And here is the five-block-tier rate structure we are proposing. And so as you can see, so we have kind of two ways that we're presenting this for your residential. We have your impacted residents, and so that is the number of customers who at least reach each block. And then we also have the number that stops, so that shows how many customers stop in each block. So for example, in your second block for 6,000 to 12,000 gallons, approximately 30% or almost 4,000 customers stop and land in that block. But about 7,100 actually get to that block and then continue going forward, or some go forward. And here's just kind of show the migration of the tier structures. So we have our 100 or less customers, you can see the 10-block structure right now. We are combining some of the tiers and reducing it to a five-tier structure. As you can see, we're keeping that very first tier, the same 304. And then for the commercial 2-inch compound, it is still a 10-block structure, and then we're moving it over to the five-block structure as well. And then this is just to show you the monthly impact, and this is just on the water bill. So about, almost 7,000 customers won't see any change, because they use less than 6,000 gallons. And then the average change is only about a dollar a month. And once again, this is mainly on the water bill. And here, we just wanted to show you the five-year outlook that we're using for our revenue requirements. And so when I'm talking about a revenue requirement, we take your expenses, and then we back out any of the non-rate revenues. So any revenues that are not specific to your water and wastewater rates, so your penalties, your TAP, your connection fees, any of those other type fees get lumped in and are called the non-rate revenues. And then for our capital, we've actually kind of, we have our baseline revenue requirement, and then we've taken the capital funded through our reserves out, just so you can kind of see the baseline and what that impact of capital is going to look like. So this one is water, and then on the next slide, we also have our wastewater revenue And so we are proposing two rate scenarios. And so the first one is a 4% scenario, and this is a 4% increase on the overall rate revenues. And so for our first year in 2022, for water, we would only have the tier structure change. So the minimum charge would stay the same, that base 304 would stay the same, and it would just be the tier structures and then the rates in the following tier structures. And then, for 3%, same type, only water will change the tiers, but we're aiming for a 3% overall rate revenue increase each And so kind of, how does that actually look compared to our revenue requirement? Here you can see with our current, if we did no rate increases, we would just be covering kind of our baseline revenue requirement in our capital, and then our 304% do get higher up to cover, help start covering our capital. And this does take in the ARP funds. And then just when we look on a cumulative five-year outlook, we can see, we have our target total capital we're needing in the next five years. The 4% and 3%, neither of them fully reach the fully funded capital over five years. However, with the ARP funds, the 4% scenario could get us there. And then here are just the monthly impacts to your residents. We have a 6,000 gallon water bill and wastewater bill, and so that impact, about 7% of your customers have that 6,000 water bill. And once again, on the 6,000, you can see the water bill does not change, because 6,000 is still in the first block, and then the wastewater does have an increase. And then our next one for 12,000 gallons, that's about 3% of your customers, the water bill does change slightly due to, because once they hit 12,000 gallons, they do get into that next tier, and then our wastewater as well changes. Then here, we also chose some commercial customers for you, for the bill comparison as well. We have 15,000 on a 5/8-inch commercial, and then also 100,000 for your average 2-inch Once again, we kind of looked at some of the regional bill comparisons at the beginning. Here, we just have those again. So this particular one is looking at just the minimum charges, no volumes at the moment, so it's just that base level minimum charge. As you see, the water does not change, but here, the wastewater does slightly, but you still stay middle of the pack compared to the other cities. And the next one we have is a 6,000 gallon customer. Once again, water does not change, wastewater does slightly, but we still stay, we're a little bit higher in the middle of the pack, but we are still kind of right in that middle, and we do not change compared to the other cities. And then here's the one that I showed at the very beginning, but now we have our two scenarios on it. And so this is our average residential customer. We are still at the middle of the pack. But our water did change a little bit, just because this is an 8,400 gallon customer, and so they would start seeing the effects of the tier change. I see, and then, so now it's just kind of the path forward. And so up here, I do have a table that shows our historical rate revenue increases. As you can see, this is lower compared to our historical ones, except for, once again, 2021, we didn't have any rate increases. And so that one is lower. And so, based on discussions with staff, 4% is what we're recommending, just because it funds most of the capital. And so what we're looking for y'all is just kind of your thoughts on the rate structure that we're proposing, and then just kind of the overall increases, this 3% or 4%, and then next steps.
Thank you, thank you, Megan. Counsel, questions? No questions. Yes, Councilmember Scott, or Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so some of these proposals, I mean, the proposed rate recommendations, part of this is to cover the planned capital improvement projects that we see coming up in the future, correct?
Yes.
Have we factored in any of the potential use of the American Rescue Program funds into those calculations as offsetting some of those costs?
Yes. So, let me go back a couple slides. So on this five-year outlook, that yellow portion of the column, that, that's what those ARP funds would be in addition to. So under the 4%, that the ARP funds would get us over our capital target.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Scott?
Can you go to page 12, please? So on this one, the percent with no change, did you say that was like 40 or 50%?
Yes, the percent with no change would be, that word is not...
The first column?
Yeah, it's that first column, that's about 0 to 50 cents, and so the number with no change is about 7,000 customers, would seem.
What percent of the water customers is it?
It's about 49%.
About 50%?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of another reference, is page 10, shows kind of each of those blocks, who's going, how many people are going to be impacted in each block.
Yeah. I'm kind of simple about this, because I'm not like a water engineer. I know that I had four kids, and my water bill used to make me so mad. I actually called Mayor Baldwin once, because it seemed like we're getting penalized for taking showers. We weren't out there watering our lawn, but, you know, cooking every day and showers and everything, it went up quite a bit. And I kind of object to putting the onus on people with more kids, you know? It's not just people who have sprinklers and they're just water wasters, you know what I'm saying? So I have compassionate families.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's why we did keep that 0 to 6,000 block the same. 0 to 6,000, kind of in discussion with, with staff, we found was most of indoor use, at least on average. Not for everyone, obviously, as you have more kids, it can definitely go up. But that's...
Yeah, I use 17,000. I was like, 6,000, who uses 6,000? Because you got kids. So I do want to be sensitive to that. I like Councilman Davis's question about the additional funding, but I, I kind of want to go on record for, I'm real sensitive when it comes to rate increases or tax increases for our citizens. I know we have to get the money somewhere, and I know there's a lot of growth, but sometimes it seems to me like the growth comes on the back of our citizens who are living here. And so I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar, and wanted to go on record. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dalla?
As we, we looked at that, we also, did we take into account the impact fees paid by new development?
We did, yes.
Okay. You know, I mean, the bottom line is, is that we're a growing community, and we have to provide this infrastructure, and this stuff is not cheap. The numbers just kind of blow your mind when you really start looking at it. We, we have to provide this service for our residents, both water and wastewater, and we need to do it in a way that's financially responsible for the long term. I don't like the idea of rate increases. I know we have a pretty substantial portion of our population that's on a fixed income. It's a struggle, but I see the, the 4%, you know, getting us where we need to go, and for the smaller households that probably don't have kids in them, which are probably the ones that are on fixed incomes, seem to have the highest proportion that have no impact on it, and I think we can go with staff's recommendation on this.
Hold on a minute. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker?
Looking at the impact, like, for an average household, even the ones that use the higher gallon usage, I mean, I think we're looking at like $10, and that's per month, right?
Yes.
So, and even at the 4%. The only thing that I was noticing, that there was a graph that your blocks, when you went from like all the different price scales to the, like, five blocks, yeah, over there. So, to me, it looks like the person or entity most impacted is this guy over here in the commercial 2-inch, who's at the 90, up to 96,000, and he was paying 361, and now he's going up to 617. Is there, what's that equate to in a dollar amount? And if you can say, I don't know how smart you are on businesses, who use this, like, what type of business does that look like?
I know staff has gone through and knows more of these businesses than I do, so I'll kind of probably defer to them to tell you the types of businesses up there. But yes, you're correct, that the commercial users would be hit harder on this one.
So that's like a 2 and 1/2?
Yeah, I don't know, I do have the dollars more, but I do not have them, just off the top of my head.
So ma'am, as part of the study, we looked across all of our users and where the natural breakpoints were for businesses. That's kind of where we came up with the 96,000. So you're looking at light manufacturing, some of the more industrial users at that point, especially with the 2-inch compound meter, you're talking about lots of water coming at that point. So, but the numbers are much smaller, although those brackets, there's a number of them, the actual customers is pretty small.
That are affected. Do you happen, and like, if I was a customer who, I use 96,000 gallons, and I was paying 3, what is it, $3.61, is that, what's the unit there?
Yeah, 361 for the 96.
Okay, and then I, I jump up to the 617. How does that, what does my bill look like?
So we can show, we can do that for you math, because it's, again, it, as you go to each band, it changes, so it's not 96,000 for that whole rate, right? So you have to go from 18,000, then you do the 20, 18 to 24,000 rate, then the, so you have to do...
Oh, I see. Okay, so you're, okay.
An cost increase, so it's not 96,000.
Taxes.
Times 617. So we can run that numbers for you and provide that later.
Okay, so you're saying that only from 90,000 up to 96,000, you're charged the 617, but prior to that, you're at the 486, and et cetera?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they kind of shifted. Okay, so that's probably less egregious of a impact. Okay, thank you.
For most families, the 0 to 6,000, that's the essential use. So that's your laundry, that's your showers, things like that. Now, if you've got a pool, and you're watering the lawn, that's when you go into that next bracket, because we looked at that very in-depth ly, so that we minimize the impact both on our elderly demographic, as well as our families, so.
Okay. Councilmember Hayward?
I like the fact that you simplified the, the different brackets, so you know kind of where you stand and look at it. And I just have to say, I don't have any kids at home, and I fit more beyond the 6,000 scale, because I do water a lot. And I just like the way that it's going, and I, as far as the rate increase, I know that we have to have that, being that we have all of these capital improvement projects, and one, living up off of I-35, I'm looking forward to that project. And I know that we have pressure issues, and have had pressure issues down in the south part of Shirts. So I think, ultimately, do we not like it, but when you grow, the problem with growth is you have to sustain the growth with infrastructure. And when we have to sustain that growth with infrastructure, it comes with a cost. So we will have this cost until we completely build out in, whenever, 20 years or so, and we're completely built out, then we will probably start seeing some things, because there's also going to be maintenance on these projects, so. And knowing that SSLGC is also, we've just did a groundbreaking on six more wells, and they have different locations for more wells. I just know that the rate increases will probably come, because we have to have water, that's important. So, but I do like the way you broke it down and made it more simplified in the whole project, so thanks for that.
Okay. Councilmember Scott?
Can we get where we need to go with the 3% increase? Because over five years, and I'm not seeing, I have two questions, sorry, I think a lot fast. So the 3% or the 4% per year, for how many years, just indefinitely? I mean, like, next five years, what?
Right now, we're just showing at five years.
Five years.
But it's something, just with growth, we would want to still check it every year or so, just because if you do get more growth, we might be able to look at that, but then also manage and look at your CIP projects, too.
Right. And so can we get where we, thank you. Can we get where we need to go with the 3% increase? I guess I'm asking the city managers?
So, we can put that slide up with the, that one. So what that, this chart shows you on the far right is their 3% scenario, and the red line indicates that we don't get there. We, we can't cover the infrastructure repair requirements that we have, you know, if we go to 3%. Now, you could defer, but how wise is deferring, because we're going to pay more in the end anyway. Because we're going to pay more in the end anyway. So what this allows us to do is, is to cover the known requirements that we have, and not keep pushing everything to the right, you know, making it somebody else's problem three, four, or five years downstream, and then, you know, we'll regret that we did that. So, you know, that's, that's my view on that.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Brown?
And one of those slides showed our previous rate increases, historic?
Yes.
Okay, and one of those years kind of stuck out at me as, as an 11% jump, and I'm sure that that was a catch-up somewhere along the line in there. Yeah, there we go.
And so that's some growth with it. It's the rate increase plus a little bit of the growth because of overall rate revenue.
Yeah, so I'd rather be able to plan ahead at 4% and know that that's what we're coming up with, versus have to reevaluate every year and go 3% this year, 9% next year, things like that. I think it's a better plan.
And Megan hit on it, but I want to, oops, I want to be very clear. On the ARP slide, this one here, this is taking about $1 million this year and 3-point something, 3.7 in the next tranche. So we tried to take as much risk as we could, knowing that we were, should be receiving ARP funds. Even with the receipt of those funds, 4% barely gets us there. 3% were below glide slope at that point, right? So we really wanted to minimize the rate increase, and we got down to the pennies discussions at some point. So without the ARP, because that, you know, we're going to have that discussion with you all here either, I think, next week, how much of the tranche you want to put toward water and wastewater projects, both in the first and second tranche? The assumption with this model is it's about a million and some change, the first tranche, 3.7 in the second. So if we so try, if you so choose to put money elsewhere or not meet those, we'll have to relook this model, right? So we have taken some risk trying to minimize the increase in cost in our ratepayers. So I just want to make sure that that was clear, so.
Yes, Councilmember Dahl?
I guess I'll just offer one final comment there. When we're looking at that 4% scenario, it looks like we're, we're exceeding the, the target line, but I'm just rhetorically going to ask, you know, how many times have we seen a major project like this come in under what we projected it was going to cost, especially with the escalation of construction materials nowadays? So I actually kind of wondered that even at 4%, if we're going to be able to meet our needs.
We believe so. I mean, we're looking at projections, we're looking at the increase in cost of materials like the general public is, and we put a little bit of escalation factor in there. And the reality is that 4% over the five years, which is what roughly a 70, 80 million-dollar program, it's about $100,000. So you're talking about less than 1% overage, right? So we're trying to skim that as best we can. But you're right, cost overruns will drive projects up, so we'll have to look at deferment or reprioritizing. But again, at the end of the day, we really wanted to minimize the increase on our ratepayers, knowing that it impacts our entire city. We all pay that rate, and I don't want to pay a higher water bill than you do, so.
I just have one question. How competitive are we on the commercial rates? I'm concerned about our economic development and the effects.
So we maintain our market position. I think that's what, if I get the right slide here. Yeah, but we tried to, we tried to maintain our market position as we are today.
Okay, yeah, we don't want to, we still want to be attractive to these companies.
Absolutely. We have to bring this back to you anyway, so we can show that.
Yeah, if you can have that slide ready for. Okay, I think we can move forward on this. Thank you. All right, we have item number nine. That's a monthly update on major projects in progress, our capital improvement projects. Information packets were provided to council and available online for the public to view at shirts.com. So we'll continue with announcements. Any further announcements by our city manager, Dr. Brown?
Nothing further, mayor.
Okay, council, any possible updates or information requested from staff? Council, any items you'd like to place? Yes?
Just a quick question on, on the Main Street programs that we have going. If I could ask staff, is it possible for a property to be either put back into it or taken out of where we're at on that stuff? Because, you know, there's some older properties that are right adjacent to what's currently eligible for different grants and programs. And I realize what the original concept was, man, I just want to know if it's possible.
Mayor? Go ahead. For clarifying, are you talking about the boundaries of the Main Street Mixed Use District? Or? Yes. Imagine, I would imagine the council could.
Yeah, council can, you all can.
Just anytime we want.
You all can change that if you so desire.
At one point, I know there was discussion a few, a while back, that, you know, talked about going across the parkway, down Beck Street and things like that, but there should be no reason why council can't consider adjusting the boundaries.
Right now, as it stands, address has to have Main Street as their address.
Right, right. And I was just wondering if there's any, you know, how the process would work for, for a property owner to, to address that or request that.
Mr. James?
So it would typically be, the, so we've kind of used the same map for the grant area, the grant areas as well, so it would really be a resolution to amend that map by city council. So we could certainly do a workshop item for council.
Okay.
Talk about that.
Thank you.
All right. We'll consider a workshop then? Okay. Council, any items you'd like to place on the future agenda? All right, we'll continue. Announcements by council members. Mayor Proton Whitaker?
Last week, we had the joint session with planning and zoning. I thought it was very productive and informative, and glad I had the opportunity to be there. I had the privilege of doing a proclamation on Monday for a couple in town who's been married for 64 years, lived in Shertz for 50, and the wife was celebrating her 80th birthday. So it was a really nice event, and the city did a great job of providing fire trucks, police cars, animal service, animals protective services or whatever, they were there as well, and lights were flashing, and the family was out, and it was a really nice event. So it was really nice to be able to present that proclamation to the couple and to fill in for the mayor. So that was, I appreciated that opportunity. And then lastly, today, another great opportunity was a leadership presentation to Kyeong-jung Mu-sol students. And the mayor and council member Hayward and I presented our thoughts on leadership, and it was a great little forum, and the kids asked questions, and very impressed with their, their thoughts and their questions and their attentiveness. That is all.
Councilmember Davis? Nothing at this time, sir. Councilmember Scott?
Just the joint meeting, that was really very good, I thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Dahl?
A joint P&amp;Z meeting as well, and also I'd like to thank the Woodlawn Oaks HOA for the invitation to their pizza party at the poolhouse on Saturday.
Councilmember Scott Giora?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Hayward?
Yes, the P&amp;Z joint meeting, that was a good and informative. Eventually, hopefully, we'll all come to an agreement on how we go for it with residential projects. I am currently attending the CADCA conference. It is the Community Anti-Drug Coalition, which is part of being, which was offered to me through the Guadalupe County Coalition, which, you know, we got the grant from CICADA so that we can help with drug abuse and alcohol abuse with the minors. And then attending the leadership with the Kyeong-jung Mu-sol group coming in and wanting to know about leadership, and the kids were very attentive for their age group, as well as having lots of good questions. That is all.
Councilmember Brown?
Planning and zoning, like Councilwoman Hayward said, always changing, so it was a good, good session.
All right, the time is now 7:44. We stand adjourned.